Yep, I can hear you.
We're back live again. Sorry for the delay. Thank you, everybody.
All right, so continued approval of the Iowa School Business Management Academy School Business Official Authorization Program. Wow, that is a mouthful.
Right, so I'll go ahead and get us started here. The Iowa School Business Management Academy, or we just call it the Academy, has been approved, has been the approved provider for the School Business Official Training Program since 2012. Last received approval by the State Board in 2014 for a seven-year period. So we're at the tail end of that seven-year period. The Department, particularly School Business Operations, the Bureau that I work with, has worked closely with that program. Both Cassandra Klein and Jim Donahue, who I have on here as well, were very involved in review of the materials that were provided. We believe that the materials are complete and in order, and recommend approval for another seven-year period as allowed by rule. And I think there were somewhere, if I'm not mistaken, Craig, correct me, about 5,000 pages of documentation that were reviewed to continue the program. Certainly been a learning experience, I think, for both Craig and I as we've worked through this process, as neither one of us were in our current positions when the last approval was given. So we've got to learn quite a bit over this last year and a half or so. And with that, I'll turn it over to Craig.
All right, thank you so much, Tom. Good afternoon, everyone, and I'll get right to it. I want to share my screen with you, and I have a presentation that just want to go through briefly with you. Hopefully, you can see that now. It should be up on the digital screen. And so this is about the continuing accreditation of the School Business Official Authorization Program. And just by way of introduction, I'm Craig Hansel. I'm Assistant Professor of Practice at Iowa State University and the Director of the Academy. And prior to starting this role, I was a practicing SBO for 35 years and four different Iowa school corporations. And it was just absolutely a wonderful career, and I learned so much. And I'm just, this was just kind of a natural fit for me in order to actually give back to the profession that I worked in and love so much for all those years. And we have, joining us by phone today also, Marsha Tangen, who is our Mentor Coordinator for the Academy. And she spent many, many years, 38 years, as a practicing School Business Official as well. And so our experience allows us to really apply the things that are necessary for new SBOs as they come into this program. So what's the purpose of the Academy? And to boil it all down, it's basically to raise the standard, raise the bar of professionalism by improving our knowledge and skills and just the methodologies that's used within the profession. And that's what the Academy does. And it's designed to provide that structured professional development that's necessary and those foundational skills for everybody coming into this business. I think it aligns really well with your goals, Board, particularly the one about leader preparation programs where it's tied to comprehensive standards. The law specifies what the standards are for people who do our jobs. And what we've done is we've aligned this program so that it matches with those standards. And therefore, we can raise the bar, raise the expectations on the performance by tying all of our instructor curriculum and topics to those standards. So a little bit about the background of the Academy. It was started in 1991 at Iowa State University. And it was designed as an outreach program where it was really necessary that we provide some structured foundational principles behind the people that work behind the scenes in school districts. And the Academy has flourished over that period of time, and it's been very successful. And then in 2011, our Iowa Legislature passed the law for the new SBO Authorization Program. And that was placed under the Academy umbrella in 2012, while the curriculum was being developed and aligned to the standards. And then this Board passed the first seven-year accreditation of that program in 2014. The program consists of 135 contact hours. So a little bit about SBOs. When you're a member of the public, and I just know this from my personal experience with having children in school, your interaction with the school district doesn't go much beyond your classroom teacher and maybe the building principal. Very rarely does it roll up to the Superintendent or the Board of Education. And it certainly doesn't extend back to the business office where all the support functions for the classroom take place. But in most school districts in the state of Iowa, your SBO is your number-two administrator because there aren't any other educational-trained administrators in that district. And so as being the number-two administrator, there's a lot of responsibilities and a broad cross-section of responsibilities that fall on your SBO. Many times, it's combined with the Board Secretary and Treasurer, like my job was for 35 years. I don't know if you know this or not, but there's over 200 code references specifying the duties and responsibilities of a Board Secretary that have to be carried out by your SBO and keeping all those things in place. And I just listed on this slide a few of the areas, major areas of emphasis, that your SBO needs to know. Last year, and I think Cassandra for this, but for this data, but last year, fiscal year '20, over $9.4 billion flowed through school districts and AEA's. And they came from so many different revenue sources. I've always called these buckets of money, and they all have strings attached. Our Legislature is extremely fond of providing categorical funds. And they want to affect a particular outcome. And so they put strings attached, and your SBO needs to know all of these strings that are attached to the money and what you can spend it on, and all the reports that are due, and when they're due, and how to apply for the money, and all those kinds of things. Somebody has to do that. And that's a significant amount of money when you stop and think about our overall state budget. That's a lot of money that flows through the hands of your SBOs. So where's the legal authority that is behind this program? And the Academy umbrella is found in Iowa Code 256, and then Iowa Administrative Code 281, 79, and 81. And then there's a section for the Iowa Board of Educational Examiners. David Wempin has joined us via Zoom today. And if you have questions specific to the Board of Educational Examiners, David is available to answer those questions for you when I conclude my presentation. And so there's a lot of legal pieces behind this program and what's required. So let's look at the program itself. Really, on a high-level basis, on the left-hand side over here in the left-hand column, you can see the qualifications. You have to have that business background. You have to have the transcripts. You have to have the nine hours of college semester, nine semester hours of college credit accounting in order to do this job. Now, you can get your temporary license if you're working on your last three hours of accounting. And the BOEE will give you a temporary license for a year to complete that, and then you can upgrade to your initial license. And then that's for a two-year period of time to finish the program. In the center column over here is the first year of the program. And in the second or the third column is the second year of the program. In the first year of the program, we get you involved in a mentorship, and that's where Marsha comes in. Our mentor program is top-notch. In fact, just to toot our horn a little bit, it's actually sought after internationally. The Association of School Business Officials International has requested information from us about our mentor program because it's just so good. And within the first week of the BOEE letting me know that there's a new SBO out there that needs to enter the program, Marsha is working on getting this new SBO matched up with a mentor. And that mentor then works with that SBO through the course of the year. And they develop a relationship where they can bounce ideas off of one another. And if the mentor doesn't know, then they have a network of people that they can just plug into to find out what the answer is for their mentee, et cetera. And so it's just been a fabulous program. And it's the number-one comment that we receive back when people exit the program. I'm glad you have that mentor program in place. And so I guess they don't care about the rest of the classes we teach, but they sure love the mentor program, okay? So in the first year, we try to deliver 81 contact hours. And they're all structured into various components at various times of the year. And we'll go into that in a little bit more detail. And in the second year, we almost replicate that, only it's only the 52 and a half hours plus they are required to take an ethics course at Heartland AEA. We set them up a Moodle account, and they're able to log in to that Moodle account and get the online information they need for that particular training. So in a little bit more granular basis, as we dig into the program, I wanted you to see how much time and what all the topics were involved in each one of these specific training events that take place in the life of a new SBO. And I'm not going to go through them item by item because we don't have the time today. But if you want to come back and revisit some of these, we can. Number three on this list is something that our SBOs love. And that is every month on a Tuesday from 9:00 to 10:00, they get what's called their critical calendar dates. And it's basically a checklist of the things that I'm supposed to be doing this month in my job in order to keep me on track. And they just love that. Wouldn't you have liked to have had something like that when you stepped into your job? I know I would have when I took my first SBO job because I walked into the office, sat down in my chair, and said, now what do I do? And these educational events allow our new SBOs to stay focused, to stay on track. It reminds them of things that they should be doing, that they aren't doing. And if they are doing, it gives them affirmation that they're doing the right things at the right time. As we go through year one, I introduce personally, I teach this particular introduction class for new SBOs, and I give them the landscape of what they're going to encounter in the next two or three years or in the program. There's also a bank reconciliation component to that. They love that. You might not think bank reconciliation is a big deal, but when you have multiple accounts and hundreds of transactions in those accounts every month, if you're off a penny, it can be a big deal. And bank reconciliation tips and processes and procedures is one of the highest-valued trainings we do. And so it's really interesting what our new SBOs find to be beneficial to them as they work through this process. We are in partnership for a lot of professional development with the Iowa Association of School Business Officials. We have our new members become members of IASBO right off the bat because they're required to participate in that professional development in their spring conference and in the fall conference of each year. And then we also, as the Academy and the new SBO program, deliver them special topic areas, just like Cassandra and Carla did today to our new SBO group. They presented DE Technology, which I said in on part of it. It's a great two-hour webinar about everything you need to know about the educational portal and what not to do and what to do. And you know, our new SBOs need that kind of training. They just need that hands-on look at all of those kinds of things. And so that's what we deliver to them across the spectrum of the year. In the spring, we do it all over again, and then comes the Academy. And the Academy is a four-year program, but only year one and year two actually are required for the new SBO Authorization. Nobody ever stops with that. They always go to year three and year four because it's great professional development. But you get 21 credit hours towards your 135 in year one of the Academy and the same in year two. And I've listed the classes and the amount of time that you're spent on each one of those. John Robbins, one of your own members, actually is an instructor with the Academy, and he teaches foundations and education. And if you want to know anything more about his experience with the Academy, you're welcome to ask him personally about his experience with the Academy. And then we have the webinars. And Iowa Finance has 16 chapters under the Uniform Administrative Procedures Manual. And we teach all 16 of those chapters, roughly half of them in the first year and half of them in the second year. And this is one of the only areas of the program where our new SBOs only get one shot at the class because it's not duplicated within their two-year time within the program. So if they miss one, then I provide for a makeup. All of these are recorded. They're put into our Moodle account at Heartland AEA. And the new SBO who missed this program can go in on an asynchronous basis and watch this programming. Now, I make them write me a two-to-three-page summary paper of the takeaways. I make it very painful for them to do this, so I almost get 100% compliance the first time around when it's live, unless there's some type of family emergency that takes them away from this. And that's my desired outcome. In year two, we do it all over again, only with different topics. And so I'm not going to go through these slides with you, the same way with the Academy, different topics, same way with the webinars, different topics, et cetera. Finally, when you're done with the SBO program, and as far as a new SBO, you can apply for your standard license. And your standard license, it works this way. The BOEE requires me to certify that they went through the program. Once I certify that, the SBO has issued their standard license for a three-year period of time. And during that three-year period of time, they're required to obtain 60 contact hours of professional development. And so your SBO is learning constantly throughout their entire career. We never give them a break. We always make sure that they're current. We always make sure their information's relevant in their minds. And I think that's a wonderful profession to be in, and it's a wonderful situation that's been provided for us. So what's the emphasis of the program? Again, it's raising the bar. There's an expectation that these new SBOs will demonstrate an understanding of the standards and the criteria set for their profession when they get out of this program. And we do assessments in the Academy. After they go through an Academy level, I require them to take a final exam. And they have to receive 75% proficiency on that final exam in order to get credit for the Academy. Otherwise, they get to take it over again. And so we're pretty strict. We don't let them just zone out when they're in their learning mode. We make sure that they're paying attention. And all of these standards are aligned with, I mean, all of our curriculum are aligned with our standards, and the standards are aligned with the curriculum. And when we have a new instructor, we always require a new syllabus, a new standards alignment within that syllabus. And we make sure that we have all of those compliance pieces in place so that we can make sure that we're delivering the program that the legislators expected us to deliver. So in your packet today, you receive the application, which is our, basically what we did was I took the Iowa Code, and then I picked it apart, and I put artifacts and documentation and proof. And as Tom mentioned, we ended up with over 5,000 artifacts, including all of our curriculum that was behind satisfying that state law, okay? And so every portion of that state law is specified in what we do each year in order to comply with that Iowa Code standard. Here are some numbers that I want to leave you with. In 2019 and 20, our Academy in '19 had 271 participants, 115 and 20 because we didn't offer the graduate level because of COVID. Here's the historical view of the Academy. And when you stop and think about the fact that we have only 327 school districts in the state of Iowa, when you get over 300 SBOs participating in your Academy program, you know you're reaching, you have a pretty good product, and you're reaching a very high percentage of all the SBOs out there for continuing professional development. That's borne out by these evaluation forms. We received 471 evaluations back last year in our Academy. We processed every one of those. We wrote down every comment. And all of them were very, very high in their ratings, either very high or high ratings. And we're just so proud of the success of our instructors and the Academy and the quality that they deliver. We don't have 57 participants in the new SBO program today. We have 62. When this program was first envisioned back in 2012, the statement was made that we'll have between eight and 14 per year. That was a lie. I'm currently working with 62 in the program. And it's a joy, but it's an overwhelming number. It really is. And I love all their emails every day, but I tell you what, it keeps me so busy. It represents almost 20% of our school districts in the state. Nearly a third have gone through this program in the last seven years that has been accredited. And before that, those in those positions like I was and Marsha were grandfathered in and did not need to go through this program. So how are we doing? And I wanted to leave you with some of these numbers. Are we making an impact with this program? And I can categorically say that I really believe we are. Again, thank you to Cassandra. She provided some of this information for me, and it's just fabulous. But if you look at the late filers and you look at when this program came into being in fiscal year '14 and the drop-off, I think we really did raise the standard. I think this program really had an impact. And if you go and you look at the letters that were sent out for negative unspent balance, those dropped significantly since the program's been in place. And if you go and you look at the districts that are incurring negative unspent balance, those dropped significantly since this program has been in place. Now, can you credit this program with all of that? Probably not, but I think it's pointing us in the right direction. And I think the Department of Education has been one of the beneficiaries of better-quality reports, better timely filing, you know, less oversight, and all of those kinds of things that they have to do in their day-to-day jobs. And then the comments. How do we impact student achievement? When I was an SBO, I went to work every day saying, I'm impacting the classroom because I'm helping the buses run on time by building bus schedules with flexibility in them. I'm keeping the kids' bodies powered up for learning by feeding them the proper lunch and proper snacks. I'm giving them a clean environment by managing our custodial staff in the way that I do to make sure that the classrooms are clean and sanitary. I'm giving the teachers the resources they need in their classrooms. I'm getting their payroll delivered to them on time so they can pay their mortgages and live their lives. That's the behind-the-scenes things that SBOs do to impact the quality of education and let teachers teach and not be worried about all of these other things that they have to do around them and let someone else like your SBO take care of those issues. And so I provided you some of those comments. And then I also provided you with a little bit of feedback from our program, graduates or completers, and how they felt about the program. And some names are named, and they have very good reason to be because some of our instructors do wonderful work in providing this program. So there you go. That was quick. It was as fast as I can talk. But basically, our request today is to grant another seven-year continuation of the accreditation for the new SBO program under the umbrella of the Iowa School Business Management Academy. And my final slide is, here's the team of people that I owe a deep debt of gratitude to. They worked tirelessly on this. They renewed information. They gave me feedback. They put things together. I mean, I really, really appreciate these people. And they turned out a very good product for you to review today. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Board, and ask if you have any follow-up questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just comments. This was incredibly well done. Thank you. And I don't know how much more we can say. Just thank you to all you put into this. Thanks to Iowa State, too, for their willingness to provide professors and staff to help us and so forth. But I was just duly impressed with this as I went through this, the 38 pages that I had to read. Thankfully, it was more than that, but certainly gave me confidence that we're doing a heck of a job in getting these folks ready. And I can't imagine 400 different revenue sources. I don't know how you sort that all out, but thank you for helping folks around Iowa, and thank you for making school better.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Just a comment from our SBO I was now following. Very complimentary of the program, very complimentary of the network established between. Craig is probably as important as the classes, really firing up that network where people feel comfortable in calling and communicating, collaborating together. She's usually kind of a skeptical person, but she had nothing but good things to say about it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Can I have a motion?
I'd move that we make the approval of seven more years for the Iowa School Business Management Program.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got all my items? No. I got it. Actually. Should I move this over there?
Yeah.
I'm gonna move this closer to you, Amy. And wherever sitting up there.
That mic?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't think you can hear you if you're over across the room.
Thank you. All right. So is Marcia ready? And for those of you who are on Zoom, my name is Amy Williamson. I am the, I was almost going to say I'm the bureau chief, but I'm not. I'm the deputy director for learning and results. We cover preschool through twelfth grade education. This is already the March meeting of the state board and it is time for you to take a look at progress of the Davenport School District on the measures for their accreditation. So Davenport has been conditionally accredited for a while now. And the board hears a report from the district and from us every meeting. So we have both their standard report and TJ Schnecklot, who is the district superintendent in this hearing, has been talking a little bit about that. And we have just a few additional slides we want to share with you because you need to make a decision today on continuing the state partial operational takeover of the district. Or going back to that quote, and the status quo prior to that action you took in September of two thousand twenty was that Davenport was conditionally accredited, but the state did not have operational control of the district. You have the recommendation in your board packet. So just to kind of center us, I want to go back to some slides that we shared with you multiple times. One is just what our differentiated accountability monitoring process is for the state and when we involve the state board in that. And so this slide, it's different colors this time, but it's the same process. We have a department monitoring process that begins with universal desk audits for all districts every year. We do that for AEAs too and preschool programs. If we find anything that we think we need to look into, we do something supplemental that is generally a desk audit, but can be onsite. And then if we find anything else, we do something intensive. When we find something that needs to be had intensive support, we let you know because it may involve you. And then that's when we might become involved in a phase two visit where we start thinking about whether accreditation might be at issue. There we go. So this visual is the way that the state board has been looking for a few years now. So since two thousand eighteen, actually, at where the state board's action actually belongs and sort of the course of events for districts that are in the process of being monitored. So we start with the desk audit. If we actually go to an accreditation team visit, which would be the, the first step and just checking things out, if it's an intensive visit, then we have a report to the director. You make a decision on whether to do something with accreditation. You can go to conditional accreditation or continue with full accreditation. And then we go back and visit again. This is just by way of helping you remember that you are kind of in this decision loop around continuing with conditional accreditation, dissolving a district or having them in full accreditation. And these are the dates when, well, actually they're the years, they're not the specific dates, when you took all of these actions or when the department took those actions. The interesting thing about Davenport in this whole decision loop for you is that you made the decision for the state board to take partial operational control of the district. And that's not a regular thing that happens in the state of Iowa, but it's something that's available to you as part of continuing conditional accreditation. So you're not ready to go dissolution. You're not ready to go full accreditation, but you want something additional for an additional step. This is, you know, before we get into why we're making the recommendation that we're making and sort of the status of the district, I think one of the biggest things that's happened for Davenport in the last six months is their new structure that they're going to be putting in place for their central office. So one of the things that you would have read in both of the special education report that we brought to you in two thousand eighteen and then the phase two report that we did in two thousand nineteen was concerns on behalf of the department team about the structure of the central office and their ability to deliver and implement changes and sustain them. And so, you know, I'm really happy to report that the AEA and the Davenport folks have done a tremendous job of coming up with a structure that they're really pleased with and they're implementing. I'm actually going to let TJ talk about them because it is his plan. So he was, go ahead.
Amy, can you just push the phone over? Sorry, Mike, Mike Neller.
If you want me to get this chair in surplus or I'll just safely out of the way.
I might need to go down.
What kind of lighten the mood for me? Thanks. Structure that you see in, in front of you is an overhaul of our cabinet. And the may, there are things that are going to be staying the same, like the director of operations, HR and finance. Those are staying the same. The positions that are completely different are instructional leadership directors. And when you look at those zones, those zones are our high schools. You're receiving another call.
Is it from my mom?
One eight hundred. No, it's probably you recently stated a hiatus or something. So over west, central and north, those are our high schools. Those are our feeder systems. And those instructional leadership directors will, will, will oversee any kind of implementation of day to day operations in each one of those regions. The director of learning and results is a combination of two current departments. It's our curriculum and our technology IT. The combining of those two departments will help us. We're excited about moving forward, what COVID has taught us, that technology is going to be an integral part of moving forward with educating our students. The director of equity and learning is combining federal programs, learning supports and special education department. And what comes with that equity lens is everything that, all of our dollars that are used to level the playing field for our students, our title one or modify level growth. The most important part about the change in the structure is the level of collaboration that needs to occur. So we know that we can move the chairs around, but what the most important part is what we're calling phase three. Phase one is the rollout of our restructuring. Phase two is getting hired and actually phase three is the actual implementation. So it is absolutely critical that the, the five positions on the left collaborate. They're very similarly paid. The, one of the things that came out of a lot of audits that we had is there are too many bosses. The hierarchical structure got in the way of making decisions. So this levels that playing field, but the absolutely most critical thing about this structure is the level of collaboration that's going to be necessary. And we're, we're utilizing the implementation structure right now. So our rollout of our crisis response violence prevention has implementation people in every building. And it's, and they're there to support the buildings, not a compliance check, not a boss do this, that kind of thing. And so we're actually seeing some good success. And unfortunately, there's been a lot of trauma that's been happening as our, as we've returned that has, that has had us utilize some of the things that are in place. And so we're seeing that it's actually working. And so that's the new structure. Down below it, we're taking our central office. So what, way we currently are, we have specialists. We have different people in different areas and arenas that will be relocated into buildings. So I think it's a key thing to, to know that each one of these instructional leadership directors will be housed in a building and have working space in buildings. And so I, I saw an example of why this would be, why this will be beneficial if implemented in phase three correctly. Where, and, and this happens in every arena where a direction was given. But in the building right now, we're trying to get ready for ISAS, which is the end of the quarter. But this direction is really, really important. If the people who are giving those directions are standing right next to the people that are implementing something, that it, it breaks down a barrier. And so that's the, that's one of the key components to, to our new structure. I, I'm, I'm very optimistic. A lot of times when you, when you put a new structure in place, rarely do you get an opportunity to utilize the rollout process and we're actually doing that now. I know Bill Decker's been integral in, in implementing this. So Bill, do you have any?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have anything that you would like to add to that?
And I just ask if you, sorry, just, my mic's on the phone, so.
Watch the chair.
Yeah.
Short, but I mean, just the biggest pieces. And Dr. Lebo and, and Amy Williamson took a walk through central office in Davenport back in early November, late October, somewhere in there and came away and said, there's a lot of people here. And so one of the big components is, is not only are the people, not only are those five people going to be in buildings, but the people that they supervise are going to be in buildings. And so it's really taking a lot of resource out of a central office environment where they're sending orders down the line to the people who are in buildings. And I think that's, that's probably one of the key components of, of what makes this work.
About how, you, you talked about kind of a three phase, I think, plan. So about how long do you think it's going to take to get people? I mean, so I'm assuming everyone's in the central office now. Are, are you going to be moving them soon? Or I guess what's the timeline on this?
Sure. The, right now, we're, these position, these positions have been posted and we're beginning the interview process. By the start of next year, our, we, we will go through the list of people that are currently in central office and need, and can be relocated into our buildings. Like when I say that, the operations, HR and finance, it makes sense for them to be centrally located. It doesn't make sense for the CFO to be in one, one of the buildings. But say, for example, our five oh four coordinator might be located, located in the central position or in the central region, but still have district wide responsibilities. And so those are the, those are the kinds of things that we're going to begin to work through after the hiring process. And then tho- those, those onboarding and, and orientating will happen in, I'm, I'm guessing June and July. And then, and then a full rollout in August when school starts.
Okay, okay.
And we have a little more on kind of why it's, why it is that way, kind of in a couple of slides coming up too.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And so I'll, just in the interest of keeping us moving, I'll just, I'll keep going too. But thanks TJ, and you don't need to move. I'm sure you're going to have more to say.
Okay.
We don't want any more chair incidents, so. All right. So with that as context, I want to give you a kind of a different visual way to look at some of the work that Davenport has been doing actually for, since two thousand eighteen. We thought it was important to present this with a couple of different ways of thinking about it visually that really helped our team. And when I say our team, I'm talking about Director Lebo and myself, TJ, Bill, and then Shane Williams is also on. And then a couple more department staff would be Brad Niebling, you heard from this morning, and Barbara Oland, who also works in our division. We've all been working together quite a bit to think through what's the best way to implement everything that Davenport needs to do. But truly, the AA and the district have been doing all the heavy lifting on this. So here goes. So this is the MTSS triangle and MTSS is a multi-tiered system of supports that we use all across the state, districts and schools use all across the state. And so it's really about providing students with the supports that they need and then layering those supports. And you've heard us talk about that before. That is about academics and it's also about social emotional learning and behavior. There is a big component of Davenport's plan that is about PBIS. And sometimes you have heard us talk about, well, is PBIS pausing? Are we not doing that right now? And we wanted to make clear that feeling safe at school is the foundation of all of that work. Because kids can't learn if they don't feel safe. And if teachers don't have like a go to plan for what happens when there's a crisis, if there are traumatic events, then it's difficult to have your work environment be functional. So all of the work that Davenport has put into the crisis response and violence prevention work that we have been talking about at board meetings for, I would say, intently over a year now has really paid off. So they have rolled that out. There has been training for all of their staff. And that is a huge step forward for them. And we thought that this visual would be really helpful for both their board, their staff, and then for all of you and members of the public who are interested in, in why that has been a really big piece for them. You don't need to read this because you actually have the regular reports that we bring monthly from Davenport, which includes all of these required actions. The reason that we wanted to present it to you this way is so that you can see, yep, there's a list of all the required actions. In fact, these are in our CASA system so that Davenport knows that they need to do these and they do need to check them off and we reply when they are finished. It's not a list of checkboxes though. And no matter how many times you say it's not a list of checkboxes, it sure does look like one. So we wanted to take a different visual approach to it and show all of you how it actually is a system that helps you think about what does it take for a system to function? An educational system. So this is the model that we use for our state to show what it takes for a school or a district or even the state or an AEA to function appropriately. You can use lots of models for continuous improvement. You can rearrange these in lots of different ways. There are lots of good ways to do that. Ours has these five conceptual areas and then the healthy indicators in the center are the things you measure to understand whether you're doing a good job. What we did is take all of the things that Davenport needs to do to have their system working and hang them off the side of the conceptual areas just to get a picture of. So when will we know that Davenport has gotten the work done that they need to do? And then we listed things that are done, things that are, they're working on them and things that have not been started yet. And an extra layer on this is for those things that are working or, or in process and things that aren't started, exactly how big a lift is that? And how much assistance does the district need? How much time does the AEA needed to vote to provide and support? And how much is, how, how much would the district benefit the oversight and actually the authority of the state board? And because of the state board, Director Lebo, by, in actually doing those things that are the really heavy lifts. So you can see that they actually have accomplished quite a bit, right? They've got things working over an infrastructure that were really big. The finance part was really big. Implementing the crisis response and violence prevention over as part of the intervention system. Was very big move forward for them. And they still have really big things. And they still have really big things to do. And so the biggest things that we wanted to point out are over near universal instruction and intervention system. The multi-tiered system of support and that's really going to affect disproportionality, especially the work in early literacy. And then everything that comes after crisis response and violence prevention is working up the triangle. Those are really big. And then work with the board. Even though, like, the board, I think, is in a good place, right? We have two board members here and they've, they've been doing good things. The board is just starting to do lots of great developments with the Association of School Boards. And we're actually enjoying providing some of the support for them. So are things working? Yes. Are, do things need to be done? Absolutely. And it's not a small task. What TJ just showed you for restructuring is a really, really big deal. And they've hit the tip of the iceberg on restructuring. That is going to be a really big deal for the district. So just to demonstrate that as well, we've provided this to, I don't want to overload you with phases, but TJ talked about the phases of implementing just staffing, that piece at central office. The phases of implementing their corrective actions actually rely on sort of a pre-phase of just the district restructuring so that they can get to building capacity for that leadership team. So TJ is going to have a whole new leadership team around him. Now, I'm not saying there'll all be new people. I'm sure that some of the people who are there are going to apply for jobs. And we don't know who the best candidates will be because they're going to, they're about to do some hiring. But it's a new team regardless. Whoever's there, that team has to form and have some capacity building. And then you move on to sort of the instructional capacity and, and the, you know, skills to do exactly what they want to accomplish. So this is all really good news and it also requires a lot of support. Which brings us to our recommendations. So we have recommended four things. I'm not going to read all of them to you because I know that you've had the opportunity to read them. What I really want to do is make sure I take a moment to see if Shane Williams, who is, is with us, has any comments that he would like to make. And actually, I should make sure that David, if you haven't promoted Shane to panelist, could you make sure that you do? And then if TJ has anything he'd like to add, if Bill does. And then of course, we have our, our board members here from Davenport who may wish to comment on, on some of this before we open up for questions.
I'm sorry, who was it you needed me to promote?
Shane Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, is this a good time to just jump in with a little commentary?
It is. Thank you.
So just to provide additional context for the state board as you're making this really important decision, I just want to shine a light on how critical the three-pronged partnership among the Department of Education, the AA and Davenport leadership has been to getting some of these very foundational elements established. And I'm confident that moving forward, this will serve as a model as we start to talk about MTSS deployment and implementation of those pieces, the central office restructure and making sure that we have not only the people in place, but also the elements to support those people. So we create a coherent system moving forward. So we never end up back in the same position that we're currently in. And I would say that the third piece that we're really focusing on right now is how to embed this model that we're using with CRVP in the future. So TJ kind of mentioned this earlier that we have an established approach and model that we believe is scalable. So when we talk about literacy implementation and disproportionality, leaning on some of the empirical success that we've had with respect to CRVP, we have a leadership and communication cascade where we work directly with the Department of Education, both Director Lebo and Amy. We also work with Brad and Barbara. We work with some internal experts. We run that through the Davenport leadership before any of this is ever deployed and impacts teachers. It's gone through a lot of decision-making filters to make sure that when we're, when we're talking about systems level change, we can ensure that it's not only high quality, but it's also scalable and supportable across the entire district. So what I would just emphasize is how methodical our approach has been and just how critical the partnership has been as we've established that foundation. And I know there's maybe been a, maybe some questioning about why we're not further along in the MTSS and PBIS and those pieces. And I, I can't emphasize enough how fundamental it is to having a high-functioning system to ensure the psychological and physical safety of not just the students, but also the adults in the system. And then telling unless that piece is established in the system, it really adding more to the system in terms of simultaneity and additional efforts, we believe is not the optimal approach. And we're nearing that point where we are getting some empirical validation with respect to CRVP, where we feel confident that we can start layering on some additional efforts. But we certainly don't want to do that without, again, having a very methodical, specific, precise approach that we can ensure a level of fidelity that hasn't been there in the past. So I think that's just additional commentary. And I would certainly be open to any questions on specifics or additional context from state board members.
Yeah, I have some questions, but maybe a better when we're finished or our presentation?
And if anyone else wants, I'm just asking you to come up here. Sorry, here, because I saw the phone.
I can move.
Oh, yeah. Or you can move with the phone. Yeah.
Heather, if you want to say anything?
Basically, I just wanted to add that things are going well in Davenport, better than they have in quite some time. And I can empathize. A lot of board members are not really fully clear on the real picture, but I can understand how we ran into this trouble. But again, as we've always said, you don't know what you don't know. We've learned some things now. It's wonderful working with the AA. It's wonderful working with Harry, Gary, Luanne. Everyone has been very instrumental with Davenport. And I'm just hoping the board would consider the proposal and the recommendations and go with that. And we thank you for even considering Davenport and even willing to work with us and assist us in becoming better.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, that was good.
I'm Dan Goz, I'm the board president. That's our vice president, Linda Hayes. As my AP said, you know, we've learned a lot of things. Our district had a lack of leadership, I'm not gonna lie, at the board level, at the superintendent level. Hopefully I'm getting some trouble for saying this. But it's just where we were. And like she said, you don't know what you don't know. You know, we're learning a lot of things. We're a lot more proactive. It's nice to have those supports. And I think, you know, in the past, we would implement things and then move on to the next thing and not make sure that that thing was fully implemented. You have to have a good foundation to build on. I equated to, I'll use the sports analogy. TJ is our franchise quarterback and we need to build a team around him. He has to have a good offensive line to protect him. He needs to have wide receivers and running backs as well as a good defense. And that's something we haven't done with the organization. That'll help out a lot with those things. And the supports have been great. We've learned a lot of things from the IASB, the AA as well. Our board meetings run a lot better. I'm not gonna say that that's our leadership, but it's just a lot more informative. Board members are a lot more involved in asking questions. And I can't tell you how nice it is to see a line item budget and know where you're at throughout the year and what percentage you're at. And those are things, I've been on the board for five years and I've asked those questions the whole time I've been on the board. I brought up issues that we had only to be, you know, running into a wall. So it's nice to see things happening the way they are now. It sucks that we had to get to where we are, but we're there. And at the end of the day, we have to do everything we can for our students in our district as well as our community around, because at the end of the day, that's who we're serving. So with that being said, I'll leave it at that. I'm not as adequate as my partner.
Well, thanks for taking your time to serve kids.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
You know, I look at you guys a year ago and then today, I mean, it just, it's a world of difference in terms of, you know, it seems like board engagement and just, it's like the lights have been turned on. So that's huge.
I'm Bill Decker, the chief administrator at Mississippi Bennett. Just to make sure, I don't know, we introduced Shane Williams that you heard with our director of Ed Services. And for us, it's been really a very successful partnership. And there are results that show it's a successful partnership. We have a vested interest. Davenport is one of our schools. If they don't look good, we don't look good. If they look better, we look better. And so as I said, we, we are definitely ready to help them and continue to help them get better. If you look at the way it's gone so far, first of all, the presentation right before us had a, had a very direct impact on Davenport. That the school business official, Craig Hansel, was a part of the interview team that helped select the CFO. And that, that is one layer that shows that with help and support, we've made progress and turned that district in a different direction. So financially, the district is in an immensely better place than it was six months ago. If you look at the CRVP, again, it's, it's gone a long ways and it's in a very successful place right now. And that, that's up at the top of that chart too. And then the last one, I'd say, you know, you've, you've seen it and you made comment of it. The board is in a much different place. And they're asking the right questions through the guidance of IASB. They're looking for the right data, again, through that board training. And, you know, some constant conversation and coaching that's going on. So there's success because of the, of the partnership. It has been a very successful partnership. Dr. Lebo, Amy, TJ, myself, Shane Williams are in conversation twice a week for sure and probably much more than that. So it is, it's worked very well to this point. But we've gotten this, we've gotten through those three big areas. We have a lot of work left to do. So I would join with what Director Linda Hayes said that, or actually vice president, I shouldn't call her director, Vice President Linda Hayes said, I do hope that you will take the recommendations because those, they're working. Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions, I think.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah. What do you have to talk?
You want to talk again?
No, I'm good.
Mike always asks questions. Everybody knows that. You know, yeah, you, you've made some great progress. And I think the thing that comes up, first of all, is usually the financial issues. And it appears that we're getting those kind of squared away. My main concern in every school district is the safety of kids and how comfortable they feel in the classroom and in the hallway. That verbal and physical attacks don't take place. They can find a comfortable place to actually learn. And I think that's your biggest challenge always. It's, it's not just yours. It's the challenge. It seems to meet all school systems. But yours gets highlighted because we had the financial problems and other problems, TJ. I mean, I mean, that's, that's unfortunately, or maybe fortunately. Maybe, maybe it was good that the issues were raised so that we could actually address this. So PBIS, folks buying into that. I mean, you have the best feedback to me. I mean, people are buying into that, your, your staff, because that's essential. If you, the old timers like me, it's hard to get them sometimes on board with new ideas, but is that working for you?
So the thing that I want to reiterate is that our crisis response violence prevention is, is PBIS. And so if you look at the system that we have, we, our next steps, I'm really excited about in this area are youth leadership teams. So we're going to begin to empower our students, which I think is a huge next step. In terms of the vehicle that we're rolling out in, so we're going to have youth teams. We have a district-level team. We have building-level teams that are looking at data. Okay, where, where are these events happening? So if, right now, we're specifically focusing on, you know, crisis and violent events.
Sure.
And so, but now, when you think about that in terms of, okay, where's the school discipline happening? Where are students beginning to fall off of? Or increase in discipline beginning to happen as a specific class? So the vehicle is there to continue to roll out. The, the appetite for PBIS in Davenport is very high. We, we, we had our grant that we implemented PBIS. And so the groundwork is laid to faster than slower in terms of PBIS. But right now, we're solely focusing on crisis response violence prevention itself.
Yeah, usually they talk about a community component.
Yes.
And that would be, seems to me very difficult. I mean, how do, how do we get the community involved in helping with that?
Absolutely. And so, again, this, this vehicle that we're using or this mode that we're using, we currently have a community response team and they meet monthly. Actually, they met yesterday. And it's comprised of, it's a very diverse group of people. There's decision-makers. There are parents of the, you know. And what we do is we take events that have happened inside of our schools and say, how could we have done better? And we have gotten some wonderful suggestions out of there because there's, there's community, there's resources in our community that we need to continue to utilize. And that's how we're using that group. So as we move forward, you know, and to begin to implement PBIS with fidelity, I don't want to say the wrong thing here, but, but we'll continue to use that community group. And each school will have a community group. And so that's one way that we've been engaging our community.
Let me just, just ask you another question. For a lot, for a number of years, we've been asking school districts to have teachers fill out a piece of paper about being bullied. This is one example maybe of making kids feel comfortable. So if I see that or witness that in the classroom, my obligation is to send a report on to the next higher-up. And the concept of the idea was that then we would look at these. Tell me about that in your district. I mean, if I'm a kid in your district and I feel threatened physically or verbally, that it's not safe to walk from one end of the hallway to the other, which happens frequently in schools. How, how do we deal with that bullying incident before and after?
So in our district and most districts, they follow the very simple rules. I want you to tell a teacher. If the teacher doesn't do it, I want you to tell the administrator. Administrator doesn't do something, I just, I want you to tell your parents. And from there, those instances are reported. And usually it's determined whether or not it's bullying, you know, different levels of whatever. But still, a student feels that their safety is in violation. From there, a team will meet and depending on how the severity of it, it could be the teacher resolves it in the classroom or it might need an administrative report. And then those are captured inside of our learning information system. So if it does result in a disciplinary issue, then we capture that. And also if it rises to the level of a protected class, then we involve our central office, our equity department for that, to do a full-on investigation. So in terms of gathering that data, we try to do it in that, in that fashion because we want to make sure that we're not gathering data that is not valid. And so we try and stick to those requirements that are done by the Department of Education and stick to those codes. So.
Yeah, I think the things that we think are important, we try to collect data on. And I think this was one that gets overlooked. And maybe that word of mouth is good, TJ. I don't know. Maybe that works for you. It also is important to be recorded in some way, as you said. And then analyze, look at that data, or data, data. You know, whatever it is, and what does it tell us? And how could we change the way we're approaching things? But I think as a department, as a, as a board here, I think we've been lax. My personal opinion, doesn't follow anyone else except me, that we have just said, "Report these to the Department of Ed." And what happens? Tell me, what happens to all of these? Are none of them being reported? We have some districts that don't report anything. Well, that means there's no bullying in that district. The heck there's not. I mean, you know, it's going on every day, all the time.
I think another really important, I think another really important data piece is the conditions for learning. So I think there's an established survey in every district that'll tell you the comfortability of, of students and staff and family members inside our district. We plan on utilizing that as a key measure. And so, plus our youth, our youth, our youth leadership groups, I think that's going to be critical to developing that voice as well.
But I hope you don't see what I've said or asked as a criticism in any way of what you've done. I really appreciated how hard you guys have worked at this. I think it's, it's pretty amazing what you've done. And then, and then to throw in COVID, let's just throw that in and say, gosh, did that interrupt us in any way? I think so, probably.
And I want to piggyback on what you said. By no way are we established with that data. Like, we have a long way to go with that. So to answer your question, that's how we're handling it. And, and moving forward, that's going to continue to be an area of growth. And I imagine it is for many districts. And I imagine it is for many districts.
It is. And, and I would encourage you to collect that data in some way. And we, as a department and as a board, need to hold folks responsible for submitting those pieces to us. We could do a heck of a lot better with bullying, I think, if we paid attention. So thanks. Again, TJ, thanks to you and your board and, and Bill and, and all the people who have been involved in this process. And I, I certainly am willing to give you some more time to get this thing finished. And, and again, realizing the, the enormous steps you've already taken. Thank you.
Just want to piggyback on what Mike said as far as the days concerned. You know, the financial is pretty easy to see. Those are just numbers, is probably going the right way or, or not. But Mike brought up as far as some of the, maybe the finer points as far as the data collection, not only with PBIS, but any of your, your goals or your strategic plan moving forward. Just good to chart those out ahead of time. So how do you know you're successful? What's your end game here? And what are the, the marks along the way? So you're making progress. It's, you know, when I visit and I look at school accreditation, it's often the, the data. Well, there's a lot of data collected, but there's a lot, a lot of stuff done with the data. And so in some schools I've seen, they don't have an endpoint as far as how do we know if we're successful? What are those indicators? And if you don't pay attention to that, if you don't know where you're going in game, how do you know you're going to get there along the way? So, and whatever you do, that's just a piece of advice, piggybacking on what Mike.
I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that. We are, we are. So one of the things that we are working hard is our, our superintendent board goals that are aligning to the mission of our district and our plan. One of the things that we can learn from our finance journey that we've gone on since October 1st is that when we, when we put a routine in place and procedures in place, and we review this data on this time, and the board's talking about it, now the administration's talking about it, now everyone in our community is talking about it. So when we put that data that you were referring to and say, hey, let's make a difference here. We're asking the questions that IASB has put out in front of us. We haven't done this yet. This, this is a vision. And then we're, we have a routine way of looking at, uh, reading comprehension data, discipline data, things of that nature. And the board are asking questions that, what do you need from us to support you? That's the direction that we're heading. And we have our first big data dig scheduled. And and so we're getting ready to start that journey with asking the right questions, making it routine, bringing the right data in front of our school board and our administrators and our community. So I'm excited about that. I'm glad to hear you say that because that's, that's the direction we're heading. So.
TJ, I can maybe answer a little bit of the data question that Mike asked initially about adult consensus and commitment to this being the right work. And I, I would like to shine a light on two of the, the people at Mississippi Bend that have been leading this work as well as Jake and Corey, who have functioned internally as the leaders of the CRVP team. And so, Mike, just a little bit about the consensus and commitment with respect to adults. They did a 10-question survey to establish consensus. And this was under the guidance of Brad and Barbara to really make sure that before you take the next step, you need to make sure that adults all agree that this is the right work and the single-minded focus for this district. And on a five-point scale, this was done with 1,500 respondents. So we're talking about teachers, bus drivers, food service, all the adults in the entire system answered these questions. And it was questions like, I believe crisis response and violence prevention is the highest priority for our district. I believe crisis response and violence prevention is the highest priority for my school building or job assignment. And on and on about the, the importance of elevating student voice and prioritizing psychological and physical safety. And of those scores, again, 1,500 respondents on a scale of five averages were 5.53, 4.9, 4.96. So what that does is, and again, these are survey results, they're not perfect, but I think that's an indicator that, that the district is coalescing around this being very fundamental. And it is the right work for kids. And then subsequent to that, another data piece is when staff went through two different modules of training, they did a before and an after training. And this, actually, we had 1,774 responses to this. And it addressed how comfortable are you or how confident are you responding to an event? And the, the pre-screening was 83.3% had a level of confidence. And then after the training, it was 93%. So again, we're trying to find measurables that are meaningful and relevant that will tell us whether the system is moving in the right direction. Now ultimately, the measure is what is happening on the ground with kids in the building. And we're already starting to see some good data emerge from there too. There's been some discussion at, at board meetings about events that have happened. TJ talked about that, bringing all the kids back into school. Some of those traumatic events have surfaced and the buildings have been able to have a rapid response as a result of the CRVP work. Whereas in the past, that would not have been the case. So again, I, I think that's a testament to the, the leadership internally, the partnership with the Department of Ed, some of the work that the Mississippi Bend has done. I also, the, the board is asking these questions. How do we know that we're on the right track? So they're being data-driven in their approach as well. And everybody understands that CRVP is the foundational element to moving forward.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Shane, for your, for your comments. And, and again, I would say to both of you, to everyone, listen to your kids. Listen to them about safety. If we're concerned about what's going on in the school, listen to your kids. And I know you, I know you're doing that.
Betty's had her hand up for a little while.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Betty.
Oh, that's all right. I, I have a couple of questions, but first of all, I see that Hannah isn't there. And I would.
Is she on the phone?
She, she is. And she should have. Yeah. Okay. Well, I just wanted to say, I'm really glad to hear you talk about your youth leadership teams and the student voice because I think that is absolutely critical. Amy, one question is for you, and that is, this kind of all started largely when we were looking at the special ed issues and problems. And are, are we feeling like that's corrected and on the right path now? Is there still a lot of work to do in that regard? So that's one question.
Yeah. And then excellent question. So the district did correct all individual level not compliance. So that all got done. And then they subsequently provided all of the systemic training that was required to ensure that all staff were trained so that the, that sort of non-compliance didn't happen again. Now what we're looking at is sustaining. And so I guess when you say, so are we good there? The question with special education is always, you're only ever good if you are constantly paying attention to it, right? So now we're just working on sustaining. And I, I think this year, the district, you know, and, and, you know, TJ can speak to this too. But as they were going through their budget, they realized that they probably had some correcting to do in special education too. Because they ended up going from having come out pretty much even in special education to having a pretty significant deficit. So they wanted to do some work there. However, they also wanted to, they, they didn't want to beat themselves up too much about it because they also wanted, had wanted to spend the money that they needed to spend to get things done. So I know they're making corrections there and they're, they want to pay significant attention to the sustainability. That's the conversations that we've had. But the corrections are made. And so that, we're actually feeling pretty good about. They continue to do training. Would you like to add anything to that, TJ? Bill's going to add one. Do you want? Here, I'm going to bring Mike over.
We, we have some, we have two other people that have been integral in the work. And that is Kim Hoffman, the Special Ed Director at Mississippi Bend, and Courtney Olson, who is one of our student services. And they're both working hard on those situations to make sure that we don't backslide in those areas. And, and try to provide good advice in, in maintaining and moving forward.
Good. Thank you. My, my next question then is probably for TJ. So are you continuing to see incidences of violence? I know you're working on violence prevention and you're talking about how to deal with them when they occur. Continuing to see some, some events? Or do you think that that has declined with your work so far?
So I would say that we are not seeing a decline in our events, but our response to those events are incredibly better. Let me give you an example. We had a, a death inside of one, a, a mother passed away. Students were in the school. And the response to that, we had protocols, we mobilized our counselors. We, we put social workers inside of our schools to assist our families. We helped cover the buildings. And that, that response in turn creates a more positive environment for our students. Our next steps are going to be continuing to move towards that, that prevention side. So I would say that that's our next steps, but we absolutely are mobilizing and responding to these, the prevention side is next. And in establishing our youth, our youth leadership teams is critical to that prevention. And, and moving forward with our, our multi-tiered system of support, paying attention to those things. That's, that's absolute next step for us. But there, there has been quite a bit of adjustment, coming back face to face. Students interacting. I want to think about when a school starts, there's so many inclusionary things that schools do to help students feel comfortable and safe together. And, and coming back to school is absolutely the right thing to do. Our kids needed to be in school. We just didn't have enough opportunity to do all of those, get to know each other. And it doesn't matter if you're a kindergarten or a senior. And your AP classes in high school, you do inclusionary things, you, 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 you do things to establish the rules and procedures. And so some of those things have really caused an issue. And so that was on the uptick when we first came back in February. And now the, it's getting warmer outside and, and we're starting to see some of those things. But our responses are, are, are on point. I've been watching them as we've been responding to them. Our teams get together. They put together safety plans. And every time they, they have an event, they learn from it, they debrief it, and they put preventative measures in place. So it's, it's, that's a, that's a positive, but a next step at the same time.
Okay, thank you. I, I think the response, the activities that you've done in regard to response sound excellent. And, and you've come a long way. And, and I agree that prevention now probably needs to take a real high priority. Thank you.
Is it time to move the recommendations that have been given to us? I would, I would move that we accept the recommendations that's given to us. And yeah, that's my motion.
I would second that motion and extend my congratulations for the work done thus far.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Keep it up, TJ.
Yeah. Yeah, keep up the good work. Is, I had a question. Is everybody kind of, in terms of the, the plan, the restructuring, I know that that can be hard. How are people accepting that?
It's, it's hard. It's difficult. It's.
Can only imagine.
Yep.
Yeah.
To say the least, it's difficult. But envision a time where we have that structure, a very collaborative team that's, that's working to improve the outcomes for our students. Singularly focused on our highest priority while managing all of the things it takes to run a school. And so if we've learned anything, our large, our large district, we cannot do multi-layers of implementation. And so by someone, and when, by a large entity, when we're singularly focused, it's an absolutely powerful implementation. And so when we start moving in the direction of these very heavy items, it'll be a very positive thing, but it's very difficult right now.
Good luck. I can only imagine.
Now that's what you guys are really important.
Absolutely.
So important.
Thank you so much. Great seeing you all. Thank you for coming. Okay. All right. So board reports. Oh, Amy, can I have my phone back?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. See you travels. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, we're going to start with board reports. Do you want to, do you want to start?
I can start by saying I have no report to start.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Mike?
I really don't have a report either. I, I reported from Florida for a couple of months. So been out of the, been out of the.
I know, right? Jealous. So jealous. Done?
Just led the school accreditation visit in Nebraska that went well. They always learn things. And it's always nice to establish new networks of professionals in different regions. It's pretty intense, but it's, when I get down, I go, God.
It's, it's like a couple of days, right?
Well, it's not. It takes longer than that. It's, it's like about a month-long process to, to get it going. But the actual visit, it's like two and a half.
Oh, okay, okay. But there's more than that.
And then the work afterwards.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Betty?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to take this opportunity to brag just a little bit about Marshalltown. I was really pleased to go on the visit with Director Lebo to Miller Middle School, which was where we visited. I would say that the, the team from Marshalltown that prepared that visit and did the presentations did an excellent job of showcasing some really positive things. One thing I want you all to remember is that I think our superintendent said that day that 70% of their enrollment is non-white. I think that's a pretty significant, pretty significant factor when you think about some of the positive things that are going on here. They focused on career, career readiness activities and some of the project underway and STEM activities. And we got to visit some labs, as Ann said earlier, which was really exciting. Two things that really impressed me. One was the community partnerships, which they talked a lot about and were absolutely visible in the, in the room and in the projects and the labs that they showed us. I know that the current superintendent, current administration has been working on building community partnerships for a number of years. And they've just done a fabulous job of bringing the community into the school district and, and making some really positive inroads. And the second thing that really impressed me was that they, Marshalltown School District has achieved a 90% graduation rate. And again, it's been a while since we've had that. And I, and I think that's a real positive and pretty exciting thing to report. So it was a fun visit. I was glad I had the opportunity to go. And Ann, thank you for inviting me and letting me tag along.
Thank you, Brooke. It was great. I, I agree with everything she said. Thanks for being.
Thanks, Betty. All right, Kim?
My, my report is not as stellar as Betty, but it is a great report. I don't know if you all know, but I founded a nonprofit, it's an after-school program, getting more girls interested in STEM, being an engineer by trade. And I'm now in, working in technology. Well, we were awarded the program that I ran, we won a future-ready Iowa grant. And so we have five high school interns that are juniors and seniors. And in nine months, they will come out knowing how to basically do mobile app development. So we're really excited about it. It's a big, it's a new program for us. So I, I have like three jobs. I have a day job as an engineer. I run the science program. And then I have something else going on. So we busy, but I'm really excited. I mean, with those, those high schoolers, we started, we started this month, the, the internship. So it's, we're really excited about what's, uh, is going to happen in nine months from, from now. So.
Awesome. Congratulations. That's amazing. All right, I guess it's just me. So, oh, Hannah, sorry.
Hey, yeah, I'm, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm just walking onto the bus right now, but I can do a quick update. Um, these past couple of weeks, I've been working to do round tables across the state. For students, we've led one with IOSLI with, which had different students from across the state. For students, we've led one with IOSLI with which had different students from across the state. And that was about like the impact of COVID-19 on school and that was really good. I'm working on a report for that right now. That was just last week. But I also helped lead diversity, equity and inclusion roundtables at my school. And I'm working to help lead a lighthouse team, so kind of like the youth leadership teams at Davenport is working on getting, which is awesome to them for doing. But we led some round tables during the school day and they were amazing and students really loved them. But then in addition to that, I presented at a couple of conferences. I'm working on one about the connections between social emotional learning, service learning and student voice right now that I'm going to be presenting at later this year. And then and then I also presented at a conference about the global goals, which had a unique program where you would partner with individual classrooms to work on a specific sustainable development goal by the United Nations. And they would work on addressing that issue throughout the year. And so I was able to address all these students who are from at least all of the six continents. There was nobody from Antarctica, but it was really an amazing conference too. So that's my update.
Awesome. Good luck.
Good luck, Hannah. Thank you.
Thank you.
About seven continent next to your.
That's hilarious.
Take your coat.
All right, so I just participated in NASB's legislative conference. And the bits and pieces, I was able to attend a really great, a lot on equity and student voice. Like I said, it's a huge push for NASB this year. I actually participated in a panel discussion with Secretary Cardona, so that was pretty cool. I got to ask him a question. And so that was, of course, it was virtual, but yeah, that was, it was a great conference. We had about 100 participants. So, yeah. And then I, NASB is planning their virtual, the summer one there. I guess we don't have any new board members, but we, I guess we will, which Josh has replaced. It's gonna be virtual for there. And for those who didn't attend, you can attend the virtual, was it the new member institute, you know? And then the annual conference will be in October. Still wondering whether that'll be virtual or not. So hopefully it'll all be decided in the next month or so. That's it. Do I need a motion to address?
I moved. I I moved that we adjourned.
Hold on a second.
All right, guys. All those in favor say aye. All right, mostly okay. You're done, everybody.
Thanks.